27 minutes later, the chairman of the Guam Land Trust is back from recess. Good afternoon, colleagues. We continue with our second reading. And we are currently on Bill 179. And I think when we left off, that Senator Taichu, you had the floor. You are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon to my colleagues. I'd like to thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity for us to just take some time to review the documents, some that I heard came in. I mean, without a committee report, it made it very difficult to ask some of these questions. So I do have one question, though, because while I was looking through what I did have, I didn't notice any appraisal for the property. And as you know, this whole contract was on the nemesis of a golf course. And now they want to change it to something else other than a golf course and do this without, you know, bidding on it for somebody else. I mean, if they've already decided to want to change the type of work they want to do on this golf course, then at least there should have been some kind of appraisal done so that you can offer a fair market value for this property for the Chamorro Land Trust. So I just have a question to the author, if there was an appraisal done for the property.
Would the author yield to that question?
The question is, what's the question? Did I have a copy of the appraisal?
Was there an appraisal? But Senator, please restate your question to the author.
Yes, Madam Speaker. The question is, was there an appraisal done to the property, especially from the Chamorro Land Trust, since now the land has gone from a golf course to now, you know, a solar farm? At least, this gives an opportunity for the Chamorro Land Trust to at least see what the fair market value is of that property before even offering any kind of additional funding. So the question is, did Chamorro Land Trust provide an appraisal of the property? Or have one done, at least have one done? Did Chamorro Land Trust have one done?
The author yield to the question.
Give me one minute.
We'll take a one-minute recess. We're back from recess. Senator Taichu, I had asked a question to the sponsor. Would the sponsor yield to the question?
Yes, yes, I yield to the question. I'm the one that asked at recess. But anyway, Madam Speaker, and to the author of the question, if you look on page four of the substitute bill, in the event the property is used for the generation, storage, or transmission of renewable solar power, then the third party comes in and they do another appraisal. But currently, it stands whatever the appraisal is today. That's why, if you look at all the handouts that was given to everyone, it gave the rates, what they're paying, and that if the bill passes, then they amend the extended lease to 12% escalation every five years, but then the appraisal will change whatever it needs to change. You don't need it today. They have a value ready for the golf course. And that's what the leases, that's what they're paying on the lease. Now, if it changes, the bill passes and they do generate, generation, storage, and transmission of renewable solar power, the lease shall pay all rents due at its net present value to be determined by a member of the appraisal institute certified license. Then you continue moving. Then it adjusts whatever it needs to adjust. The bill has to pass first before you get another appraisal.
May I respond?
Does that suffice?
Actually, well...
Vice Speaker.
May I respond?
Yeah, you have the floor, Senator.
Okay, I appreciate the Senator trying to answer the question. You mentioned, what page was that on, sir? Again, what page? What page?
It's on page four, on the substitute bill, on the current bill. Page four, number four. When things change, then you change, then you have an appraisal.
Well, that's just it. Things have changed. It's gone from a golf course to now a solar farm, the intent. So it has changed. And then we have a list here that talks about how much funding is going to be spent, or how much is the cost of this new agreement. And I pointed out yesterday that the only difference from what they had currently and what they proposed to have, becoming a solar farm, is only $480 extra a month. So we have numbers here that was given to us showing the cost. It's almost like a done deal, like this is how much they're going to charge this company who wants to put a solar farm on the, or what's the same company, you know, the Guam Municipal Golf Course, wants to now do it into a solar farm at this amount of money. So it just, no, an appraisal, I believe, should come first before any numbers are issued to us, because we're taking this as what they're offering us. I don't see a huge difference in what currently we have now. Again, only $480 a month difference if you move forward on this. My next question is, the resolution that was provided by the Guam Chamorro Land Trust, and that resolution was actually rescinded back. I was just wondering if a new resolution was brought forth, because the first one was flawed, you know, it had wrong information on it, and then they said they were pulling it back. Well, have they provided a new resolution is my next question, Madam Speaker.
Senator, the question to you, the question posed to the author is, the resolution is provided by Chamorro Land Trust to this body has been rescinded? And is there any updates?
Well, yeah, actually, it was brought up during the public hearing, Madam Speaker. And so...
Okay, I will ask that.
But I do know that the Speaker might have received something.
Would you like to yield, Senators and Augustines?
Yes, I yield to them. Let me answer that question. If you look at the substitute, it gives the updated resolution. They had to change it because they, it was like a number, an error. They had to fix it.
So Senator Telo, based on the substitution, as noted by...
Point of information, Madam Speaker.
I will acknowledge your point of information, Speaker Terlahi.
That is correct. The testimony that we have formally received is that the resolution was withdrawn. And even any other resolution that may be referred to in this bill is an error. So there is no current resolution that supports this bill. The other issue is that the Chamorro Land Trust Commission has never seen the substitute bill, so they've never deliberated on a substitute bill with all of these changes as well. And the third point of information I have is, yes, there is no appraisal, since the first appraisal was done in the beginning of the lease.
Duly noted. Senator...
A point of information.
Point of information, Senator Sennadustin. I will acknowledge you.
Yes, the resolution that was given to us, that was given to the committee, too, is 2024-001 from Chamorro Land Trust. The substitute bill amendment reflects what's in the resolution. It's not something new. That's why we had to make the substitute bill.
I'm going to take a moment's recess to see that. Senators Sennadustin, a moment's recess. Evening. Senator Chetina Leslatour in Guam is back from recess. Senator San Augustin, we left off with your point of information.
Yes, Madam Speaker, as my staff and I were going over the documents to make sure it's as complete as possible. Because I noticed that on many occasions, some of our colleagues here have a habit, think that we're trying to slip something through the, under the table. No, I don't play that game. Some of you may do, but I don't. And I'm going to ask for recess until tomorrow morning at 8:00 in the morning. Then we'll have all the information to include the appraisal, the current appraisal value, and why they don't have anything moving forward.
On that motion, is there any objection?
No, Madam Speaker, if I may, since, you know, I don't want to have to ask again tomorrow, but...
There's a motion on the floor right now, Senator?
To come back tomorrow with more information and just to request that also the resolution, because the resolutions that were...
So that's the point of information. You want the resolution?
Yeah, if we can, to get the resolution from the Chamor Land Trust that's, you know, solid. Because right now, we don't have anything.
A point of information in reference to that.
I will acknowledge your point of information. You may proceed.
The resolution that you have in your hand, the commission had met. The commission have decided...
You can address that to the podium, sir.
I'll provide all the information, Madam Speaker.
Okay, there is, there is a motion to recess till 9:00 tomorrow morning.
Eight, eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock tomorrow morning. Is there any objection, seeing or hearing? None. Motion carries.